Call the media order. Well, please rise. And ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on the business that's before us this evening. And please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take the rule.
Alderman Vassal.
Here.
Alderman Begley.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Mayor, City Clerk, Treasurer, Attorney Officer.
All right, no special presentations tonight. Under the consent calendar, we've got two items. The approval of the minutes from a city council meeting from July 5th, 2022, along with the approval of the payroll and a voucher list for the period ending July 15th, 2022. Need a motion to approve?
So much.
Move by Alderman Clifford, second. By Alderman Violet, discussion. Rule call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Okay, so we've got a bid opening tonight then for...
For 2022 sewer rehabilitation program. First bid is from Vigia Sewer of Illinois. Oh.
Who's our Jan on this one, do you think?
Um, I don't think it matters. Total bid from Vigia Sewer of Illinois, $551,900. 551-900. And there's a bond attached. Seconds in Sichah form. Oh. This one's sealed like Fort Knox here. I used to have one here. All right. Bond proposal from in Sichah form is $564,170. 564-170. Bond attached. Next is... Core construction. Bid proposal is $538,695. 538-695. Bond attached. Finally, we've got national power rotting. Bid proposal is $473,370.55. 473-370.55. There's a bond attached as well.
That's it?
Those are all the bids submitted.
Move that the bids be sent to Water and Sewer Committee?
Move by Alderman Violet, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Clifford, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. All right, under my report, just, only thing I have tonight is remember Thursday night is the Carr Classic, five to nine Harlem Avenue. Always draw a good crowd for that. Looks like the weather will be nice and warm. So get out there and enjoy yourself. And I know, I know some people have volunteered to help out too, so always look for volunteers, whether it be here or in the audience. So, so please keep that in mind. City Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Treasurer's report for the period ending June 30th, 2022. General fund started with $6,205,382. Revenues for the month were $941,897. Other source use, $8,127. Giving an ending cash balance in the general fund, $5,745,215. Total of all city funds for June beginning cash was $24,443,665. Revenues were $1,765,863. Expenses for the month were $2,998,719. Other source use, $225,955. Giving an ending cash balance in all city funds of $23,436,764. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Need a motion to approve the Treasurer's report? Move by Alderman Violet.
Second.
Second by Alderman McGovern, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City Clerk, anything?
No.
City turn?
No report.
All right, communications, anyone have communications tonight? All right, citizens wishing to address the council?
Hi, Lyndon Novak, 12013, 70th Court. I'm coming here because a residence to the north of us is having problems with their outdoor maintenance. They, two times this year, the city has come and cut the grass because it hadn't been cut by the resident at all. So the second time just happened recently. That is addressed, and I'm really not sure what's going on with the property. It is in total disrepair on the outside. Just doing the lawn maintenance and a couple of times a year by the city does not make the property look good, which reflects on all other properties in the area. There's a giant dead evergreen tree in the front lawn. There's a lot of scrag, never cut plantings that are now way out of growth. This has been going on for several years. There's, you know how a tree will drop the seeds for, you know, during the spring? There are probably 20 trees growing from those seeds just along our, between our residents and their, you know, it's on their, their property, but it's overgrown. There's so much vegetation, you can't even see the side of the house anymore because all the bushes that were lined up, that were growing and at one time were nicely cut, are so overgrown, they're taller than the one-story house. There's a wooden fence that was in disrepair, and in one of the bad windstorms last winter, it fell over. And it's on their property, but it's laying there still. Nothing has been done with it. It's still laying on the ground. I feel like it's a real bad thing for rodents. There, it's unsightly. Other people's property shouldn't have to look poorly because of that. You know, luckily, other people that have put some houses up for sale were able to sell their house. But it really devalues my property, and I don't want to have to look at it. Plus, you know, I don't know what the city can do about it. I myself, as a taxpayer and a resident, do not want to be involved in any kind of confrontation with my neighbor. I have no problem with the neighbor, other than keeping up the property.
Well, if you give all your information to your city administrator, maybe we can follow up on our rent for you and see what we can do.
Mr. Mayor, I can answer that.
Okay.
As you know, I sent the guy over twice and responded to all your emails, connected promptly. Grass has been cut two or three times. I'm going to give you the agent from the court thing on this, so you know where it's at. This is from our building inspector. It says, per your request, the auditation hearing yesterday involving the above property, see attached information. The summary of the existing homeowner as per Cook County taxes has failed to maintain his property and weeds, their plant growth in excess of six inches. Also, I'm being told that his rear fence is falling down. All of him and neighbors continue to complain as their property is very unsightly. Per, per the neighbors, the homeowner has told them that the property is in foreclosure, and he refuses to maintain it, but continues to live there. This is his words to our officials. He refuses to answer the door. He's not at home, or he is not at home. And whenever I've tried to make contact, he's been seen looking out the window, smiling at our public works department employees who are cutting the grass. Warnings and citations have been placed in his mailbox each time were issued, and we checked a few days later, they were gone. Thank you for contacting me. Further on, I think I sent you this, a copy of the citation and everything, what's going on. So this is in court with this guy. This guy's losing the house, it sounds like. It sounds like to me he doesn't give a damn, and we have to deal with that somehow. And if he's going to continue there, I don't know how we get him out of the house. All we can do, I brought to the attention of the building department and that about the fence back there, because I know what it's like, I've been there, I know what you're going through. I made quite a bold statement about people that shouldn't have to live next to places like that, or places like that shouldn't even exist in Palisades. Now, I got him on there, I got him working. Now it's in the court thing with the judge, and we'll see where we can go from there. I'm with Cook County. And hopefully, if he does lose the house, they evict him and get out of there and get somebody in there that's going to take care of the house. So that's where it is right now.
Yeah, because it's the second foreclosure in that home. This is the second person in a row that have gone in foreclosure, and to have to deal with that year after year is very hard.
Well, I know, I know what you're going to, because I've been to court with you on the previous one. Do you remember that?
Right, right. And I don't want to do that for this one, so...
I went there with you on there to stick up for you on that, on that issue. But that homeowner, those people that lived there before, the owner had other people in there, and he passed away. And that's why it was dismissed in court, because the citation was issued to him, who had deceased son or for went on to the other. They proceeded to then to let the house go down and went into foreclosure, where this gentleman, if you call him that, proceeded and got the house. And he's totally, and I had personally talked to him before this all started and told him he's got to maintain and cut that grass, it's getting a little unsightly anymore. I said, "Well, I'm not here all the time, I have another place in Blue Island." I said, "Regardless, spend a little more time here cleaning this up and get along with your neighbors. They owe that much to you." And he said, "Well, yeah, I'll do my best." Well, his best isn't good enough, because he continues to do it. And now it's in the courts. I took it to where we had to do legally. It's in the hands of our building commissioner and our court here, ordinance coordinator, and evidently they're following it closely. And each time it gets to a point, we're just going to cut it, leave the property. Simple as that. We're trying to get the fence cleaned up too.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know, I don't know how foreclosures work. I know it can be dragged on for a long time. I was just wondering, do the banks do anything about maintaining the property if they're taking it over?
They, they can't really.
They can't do anything? So basically, we're, our hands are tied until it goes into...
They can't go into property either, so...
Yeah, so our hands are tied.
Unfortunately, it's just due to the courts, that's all we can do. I apologize, not to we did anything, but we'll do whatever we can. But it's just, there's limitations, what we can do, but we can pursue it from our end as hard as we can, which seems like we're doing right now, so.
Okay.
We'll keep you informed though.
Okay, do you think that there would be anything you could do about the foliage, that, the overgrown trees and everything that is everywhere?
We can check on that.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Ms. Novak. Sorry for your... All right, any other citizens? All right, Finance Committee?
Well, I was, Harlan Wayboat, 7640, West 135th Street, Orland Park. Obviously, everybody knows why I'm here. It's a six, it's a, I'm on step six of a 10-part plan. Okay, and so I got a little bit more, I'm thrown behind a little bit because I didn't feel it was right of me to speak about my dead trees and my dead bushes at the last city council meeting after the horrific thing that happened on July 4th. So I took a pause out of respect for other people. But I'm here again because I wanted to read an email. And like I said, this is step six of a 10-part plan. Yes, Mr. Brown, I did read your email. And yes, the six-point plan, this is step six of a 10-point plan, is litigation. I am going to sue. All right, this was an email that was sent by me to Chris Kranzberger. Okay, it says, "Chris, since you are new to this problem, here are some of the issues. Number one, natural flow of the land is to the east, land slopes to the creek, two houses east. Number two, the builder to the east was allowed to keep and spread the fill from a 10-foot basement excavation, thus impeding the natural flow of water from our property. Number three, the berman front on the south side of our house was built by the city of Palisades Heights in return for a sewer and water easement to bring the water east on 135th Street. Number four, now all water is being directed to the ditch, to the south of our lot, which builders culvert cannot handle. Now flooding of our yard every time it rains, insignificant rains, it's not minor rains as we all..." "We have lived here for, number five, we have lived here for 25 years and have never had a water issue until this house was built. Number six, builder should have been forced to remove the excavated dirt and grade his property so not to impede the natural flow of water, as well as not to have place an island between us and the neighbors. Sincerely, Harlan Wayboat." Okay, I got a response back from him, as usual, and it was basically, "The property has not received its final grade, and we're working on that, et cetera, et cetera." But at our, the last time I showed you pictures, I showed you pictures from 2013. In those pictures in 2013, you will see that the property was already landscaped. It already had grass. The final grade inspection was not done until, and approved until 2015. So how could this have happened? Number two, the cord in the ditch that is there, that the builder put in prior to getting approval from the Cook County. He put it in in 2011 or 2012. He did not get a permit for that culvert, which is undersized, until 2015. These are all information that I got through my Freedom of Information requests. I'm out thousands of dollars. When I tried to be cordial, I tried to be nice with my neighbors. I worked with Tom Cassidy, and we tried to get things somewhat resolved. But lo and behold, the city of Palisades Heights said that I was in the wrong when I finally got tired of trying to fix the problem, and I spent thousands of dollars in my labor and did it and tried to correct it myself. So right now, this is step seven of the 10-part plan. I have a bill to give to your city administrator to reimburse me for the $7,000-plus dollars that I have spent. Upon declination of this, which I assume the city is going to vote to decline, and then we'll go to step eight. Thank you, and Mr. Mayor, thank you. You have been the only one who's been nice to me about this whole ordeal, and I appreciate that.
As you know, we've had, you're well aware, because you were there. We had the county out there not more than two weeks ago. We're working on the project. So to come up here now and say we're not doing anything is totally wrong.
I didn't say you weren't doing anything.
Okay, we're done.
Now, now, now...
We're done.
Just so you understand, is, is that the fact that you personally said, and it's on video, Mr. Mayor, that the property was graded according to the, to the plan. I have proof that it was not.
Okay, that's what you're going, we'll figure it out. Thank you. Any other citizens? Standing Committee, Alderman McGrogan.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we have two items, number nine and 10 on the agenda. The first one, number nine, is a motion to approve the extension of the current American Tower lease for six additional five-year increments at the current rent of $50,000 per year. In addition, with an escalator in revenue sharing to remain the same as, the same as it was at 5% increase per year.
Move by Alderman McGrogan. Second by Alderman Violet, discussion?
This is our best lease on those towers, by the way.
Rule call?
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford. Alderman McGovern.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes. Number 10, I'll be brief initially, and if there's any questions, you can refer to some of the things that are in the package. But this is a motion to approve an ordinance adopting the budget system. And the budget system could almost be capitalized, because it's kind of an acronym for something that's in code that allows the city to basically expedite and kind of streamline the budgeting. And there's a whole memo that David sent out on June 15th. I have it. If anybody needs me to read it, I'll read it. But basically, it's a, it's a more efficient way to do things.
And actually, it's, well, let's get, you made a motion, then you're second.
Second by Alderman Key.
It's kind of what we've been doing anyway. We've always, we've always passed a budget and also passing a, a... This is actually just replacing the budget, so. Any questions?
Rule call?
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Public safety, Alderman Vassal?
Yes, Mayor, I have no items on the agenda, but I would just like to relay some information. The past week or two, I've received two solicitations from Illinois Police Benevolance Association or somebody looking for contributions to support state troopers and policemen in this state. And I just want to remind the residents that our Palisades Police Department does not solicit funds. That has nothing to do with Palisades Heights Police Department or the city of Palisades Heights. I would, I would say that you're on your own if you wish to contribute to a telephone solicitor, but I would strongly advise not to do so. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Begley, municipal grounds of property, excuse me.
No report this evening, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Planning zoning, Alderman McGovern?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Key?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the third payment to George's Landscape in the amount of $30,093.231, for completed on the Misty Meadows Park project.
Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet, discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford. Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement addendum between the Parks and Recreation Department and Experimental Station for participation in Linked Up Illinois Link Match Grant Program, which is the link program that they use at Farmer's Market.
Easy for you to say.
Yeah.
Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet, discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford. Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
And then I'd just like to, we have a couple of things coming up shortly. On the 28th of July is the last movie in the park. It's at Myers Park at dusk. It's going to be Nightmare Before Christmas. And then on August 4th, by the gazebo at 7 o'clock, we're having our last concert in the park. It's a Chicago experience. And the reason I'm talking about it now is because that's the biggest event of the year that we, we do in these concert series and the movies series. And so come out early. We do have food vendors out, and so come up, you know, bring your lunch chairs and enjoy that concert. It's very well attended, and we really fill up a community park, which is a nice thing. And then I'd just like to say thank you to CNB Bank for their sponsorship of both the concert and the park series and the movies in the park series. We certainly appreciate the generosity of businesses that contribute in that way. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Roads of construction, Alderman Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a few items to announce. It's, one is the 2022 MFT update, request approval. We requested approval of partial payment, Lindell Brothers, for the 2022 road program in an amount of $116,274.01. This project has been halted due to the strike, the local quarries causing shortage of materials. Plants are not making IDOT grades. Asphalt currently, Lindell Brothers was able to complete concrete removal of some curbs or gutters removal before the strike, as we discussed at the committee. I therefore made a motion at the committee to now make the motion now to approve to Lindell Brothers repayment for the 2022 road program in the amount of $116,274.01.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford. Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
So you know, and I was asked to announce this, that some people that have their driveways may be caught or some of these intersections around town, and you may just see gravel. We're starting to asphalt some of them now. This due is because of the constituent IDOT's requirements. And we have to have that type grade asphalt, street grade asphalt versus driveway asphalt put in. And we're slowly but surely getting it all, so be patient. It will get to them, and it's just a temporary thing with the strike. It's put a big snafu on us. Secondly, an update on the Ridge and Avenue mediums update. This project was scheduled to begin June 1st. The permitting process was held up by IDOT due to lowering of a few signal boxes, causing the traffic division to review the plans. The city sent plans for three projects, IDOT and IDOT bundled all three together, instead of treating each one separately. Morris Engineer was able to sort out the issues with IDOT and awaiting approval for the letter of the signal transfer. Even with the approval, the project is still on hold due to the quarry strikes. Drainage and update work, the public works has been using recycled crushed concrete to repair storm sewers in County Square and Forest View. Crews did not do the street sweeping after the rainstorm declared the streets and collected branches in, cleaning the culverts. 76th Avenue resurfacing, a request and motion to approve a resolution for funding for the city's portion of the project up to 20%. This project is scheduled for January 2023 letting. Joint funding agreement with IDOT must be completed then. The Southwest Conference of Mayor's worth 80% of the funding. The city's responsible for the remaining 20%. The project will cost $322,000, so the city's portion will be at $81,000, including construction costs and engineering. Furthermore, the 2021 road program met with Morris M&amp;J, and they're ready to fix the issues due to the strike. Work cannot be finished, we are still holding retainage under finish, until they finish. Ridge and Avenue sidewalk design has been changed and resubmitted to IDOT. 127th Street crosswalk, there were questions from the program regarding the light, and the plans have been resubmitted to IDOT. That's at the location approximately, Rec Center. And last but not least, 123rd and Antrus Culvert, all reports are received and currently in the design phase. Not familiar with that? That's the street 123rd at that conference at Trinity College. There's a major two culvert, it's a 60-plus interest there. You have to re-replace, it's a very costly job, approximately half a million dollars. Looking on a joint venture with Trinity College, get that done to reduce the cost of taxpayers. So with that, I made the motion to approve the $116,274.01. I'll also make a motion for a resolution for the city for funding of the city's portion of the 76th Avenue resurfacing scene project up to 20%.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion? Rule call?
I'll also make a motion for a resolution for the city for funding of the city's portion of the 76th Avenue Reserving项project up to 20%.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Aye.
Also, motion to approve payment to Seco Consultants for the CMP culvert replacement at 123rd Street and Navajo Creek in amount of $6,741.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Vasso.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
And then finally, a motion to approve payment to Morris Engineer for engineering services
rendered in the amount of $14,433.75.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion? Rule call?
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Lewandowski, license permits and franchises.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item this evening on the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve Midvilla Pizza to obtain an outdoor sales of merchandise in B District permit contingent on providing a hold harmless agreement with a specific due date to be determined by the building commissioner.
Move by Alderman Lewandowski, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman McGovern. McGrogan. Discussion?
The, the building, our, our building inspector has issued a letter to Midvilla, giving them an August 1 deadline, so this motion is contingent on receiving that hold harmless claim by August 1.
Any discussion?
I have questions. Mayor, at that last license and permit meeting, there were three members present, and two members voted to approve this motion, send it here to the floor. I think this, this, this item is just wrong on so many levels. I, I went over to check the situation out, see what the landscape looked like, and was pretty much surprised but accepted that the structure was already up without any permits or without any inspections or without any approval. So I'm looking at the situation of the parking, which this seating area is built out into the parking lot for this, for this business. And I, I drive across the front of all the businesses, and I notice that in front of Golden Shoes, which is a couple doors away, there's no parking sign except for Golden Shoes clients. Next door is the Central Cleaners, and there's also signs out there, no parking except for Central Cleaner patrons. Then there's the Computer Greeks, the same thing, no parking except for Computer Greek clients. Follows that with State Farm, who also has signage in front of his building, no parking except for State Farm clients. And I go on down the line, and I, I come to the ice cream shop on the other side of, of Midvilla Pizza, which is extremely busy, an extremely successful little business, extremely heavy traffic pulling in and out next to that corral. I look further down the line, and I see Elegant Couture, and they also have no parking signs except retail clients only. And, and much to my surprise, Midvilla has in front of their already built seating corral, no parking signs except for Midvilla clients. So they push the parking all the way down, basically, to the post office. I think as, on so many levels, this is a consideration that should be denied. I mean, I'm sure that everybody on Harlem Avenue would like to put seating in the parking lot. I can't think of anything that's, that's crazier or more bizarre, especially when we're looking at such severe parking shortage in a business district and problems that we have to solve almost, you know, every year, every meeting we have, both with residents and with the business owners. Aesthetically, it's a poor decision. When we, when we were at the committee meeting, we were given some ordinances that relate to sales, sales of businesses, outdoor sales, but that actually has nothing to do with this situation. This is, this is serving food and seating people in the parking lot. And I can't think of anything more dangerous, more hazardous, and, and more un-aesthetic pleasing. Did I mention, by the way, we have a car show coming up in two days? It's going to take up X number of valuable real estate for that, that annual event. I can't, I can't, even a whole harmless letter, I want to say we can fool ourselves into believing that's okay. I, in, in my non-lawyer mind, I think of a whole harmless meaning, we may not have to pay money for a horrible accident that could happen, some horrible situation that could occur. That has nothing to do with the loss that could, that we could experience if something should happen on that site because we allowed one business to put a couple tables out in the parking lot. I'm sure that every business in town would be happy to build up a deck on top of their building, all we have to do is give them a whole harmless letter. That's a, that's a crazy solution for this thing. I think we're talking about the wrong topic. I think we should be talking about our, our building code and our setbacks, our, our building line setbacks, et cetera, et cetera, to do nothing but deny this request. I feel strongly about it. I don't know what the.
I mean, during the, the two years of, the COVID was impacting all of our restaurants, I think we were being very generous by allowing tents almost in every restaurant parking lot and all that, but we're, we're past it. You know, there's, there's no need to allow one business, you know, in, in my eyes. That's my opinion.
And I, Mayor?
First, then.
Just, just a quick comment. I mean, I, we used to have a bakery that, that had a seating area attached to it. They also kind of served breakfast. Our current bakery has, has no seating. I think they would probably enjoy being able to do the same thing and being able to serve, serve donuts and coffee in the parking lot. And I'm sure if, I'm sure that that's something that they would ask for if we approved something like this.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just got to say, Midvilla has a, has a two-part parking lot, but right in the middle of it, you have your ingress and/or egress of cars. And that goes right out to 122nd Street. And that's every car that's going to come in to any part of that shopping center. And I have to say, as somebody that's worked on parking lots and done everything as far as traffic consultation, traffic, traffic management goes, I would never, ever think in a point of public safety to turn around and allow right on the corner like that to allow this, and I really wouldn't allow it anywhere out on the, out, out in the front portion. We've got enough problems with parking.
Mike first then.
Well, one of, at the committee meeting, more facts came up, I think we're glossing over some of it. First of all, the approval of this is, they've been there during, as Alderman Key pointed out, with other restaurants, they built this during the COVID thing, and it was up, and it's been up, it was up last year, and then they took it down when the weather got bad. So when they, when the building commissioner went out, said you've done everything wrong, you know, you need to get it straightened out, they've said, well, how do we work with you? Very cooperative, by the way, from the reports we got from the building department. So then, when it came to our committee, we started analyzing the facts. We're in the middle of August, today's the 18th. We, part of this motion is that this is only good until the end of September, and that's it. It goes away, there is no start unless they come up with all sorts of things, like they have to build up like a wall if that's what, if the city approves it. And there's a lot of conditions. The thinking was, by the time we argue with them and, and turn this down, we're going to probably be at the end of September, but in the meantime, we didn't want the city to have any liability at, at all. And so we said, you have to get, and they did provide a bunch of insurance stuff already prior to us even having that meeting. So then, you know, the chairman, myself, I think we were the two affirmative votes, we said, you know what? We still want to make sure that there's no liability to the city in case, as Alderman McGovern points out, or what if somebody hits, hits them, loses control of a car or whatever? It has been there for quite some time. And we are not approving this as like, once it goes through, I mean, if it does get approved, this is like really a cleanup thing where we are trying to like kind of clean up a mess that's already over there, and we felt, you know, that to give this vendor or store a chance to say, okay, between now and September, you can do it, but after that, it's going away. I mean, it's just a little bit of the history, which we thought was a reasonable thing instead of getting, getting into some type of like pissing match with them, for the lack of a better description.
Yeah, I just have a few comments on this, too. This is a new issue for me, but as Jeff said, this is kind of a post-COVID process, and it sounds like we're kind of cleaning up some of the things that have, we've dealt with, you know, since then. I think, given that we are at the end of July, I think what a reasonable council member would do in this situation is say, hey, we're not setting a standard for the city here, so to speak, but we're dealing with the current circumstance that we have. There's parking in the back of this restaurant. I don't think parking is an issue, because you can actually ingress and egress out of Midvilla. So in terms of all the other lot spaces, I don't think that's really an issue. You know, so if this is only up until the end of September, personally, I think residents enjoy dining outside. I called my husband last night on the way home from work and said, let's go to Franklin's, I want to eat outside. You know what I mean? So I think that's something that people want, customers want. So I think that this type of a, a practice benefits customers. I think being pro-business here in Payless Heights, and I think we're also protecting the city with the hold harmless. So I personally would, I think, be in favor of supporting it.
I will say, I will say that the ingress and egress of that front parking, not the back parking, is right there, and I'm, I'll be very honest, and I'll look you right in the eye, and I'll tell you, that's a public safety hazard.
Yeah, just to buttress up against what Alderman McGrogan said, you know, the, the issue here was, this, this is spilling over from COVID, where we are a little more lax on allowing, where you couldn't eat inside, but you could eat outsides, or we had tents and other kind of things, and businesses were trying to make it. Once they were informed that they had to submit permits and be subjected to our building commissioner's review, they complied, they submitted it. The building commissioner provided to us the applicable code. Now, there is some subjectivity in the code, and maybe the code needs to be cleaned up a little bit to address this issue. But we, we also said, the, the last part about this is that if approved, next year, there is no construction at all before approval, and any construction would, you know, immediately you have to take that down, and certainly the building commissioners.
So as this stands now, this is for till September, into September?
Into September.
Okay. Any other?
Whether this is approved or not approved, I certainly think whatever ordinance we may or we may not have on the books, we should look at immediately and intently, because I think next year, same time, same story, same situation. We don't know what the, it's, it's not clear, we don't have that included, it doesn't specifically state this, it says this or that. I mean, I think the, the best thing we can do in this situation and many, many others is enforce the ordinances that we have, that we approved, that we probably wrote in the most part, that we approved, that we understood at the time, and it, it hasn't changed, haven't changed, and just show that in fairness to everybody, we're enforcing the ordinances for everybody that comes through. Every time we do a variance, especially something like this, we're showing that somebody is special and somebody deserves more than the rest of the city has agreed to and has lived with. I think this one just puts public safety at a, at a real risk, and you're just going to cross your fingers and hope that their insurance policy will cover you in the end. I'm sorry.
And I'm happy, I'm happy to recite the, the ordinance to everybody, but just to kind of cut to the chase, it is within the bounds of the ordinance. The only thing that's subjective is decorative, whether or not you find it decorative or not. But all, and, and that's per our building commissioner as well, that he said that technically they're within the ordinance. Now, they constructed it before approval, which is a, which is a problem. That's, that's the problem here.
And to that point, one of the other things we did, and the building commissioner was in attendance at the license and permits meeting that we had to discuss this, was we said, what we need to do is address the ordinance. One of the reasons is Alderman, just, as Chairman Art just pointed out, it's, it's within the code, except for like a minor thing, the decorative thing, which was the lighting or something, if I recall. And so we're trying to like clean this up, like I, I don't even know if we can really stop them if they take down a couple little trinkets that they have hanging up. You know, I mean, so when we, when you look at this under a practical standpoint, we were thinking, by the time we go through all this and start arguing, we get Mr. Brown and our attorneys involved, along probably with theirs, it's six weeks, why don't we just, and then you're done. And we made it perfectly clear to them in the letter that said, hey, this is what, if this gets approved, this is the way it's going to be. And we thought it was kind of a reasonable solution to a bad situation. And it's, and it's already been in there now from last, you know, during the previous COVID periods, they had the same thing, and we're wrapping it up now with this. So it's, I mean, fortunately, God willing, there won't be any type of accidents that everybody's worried about.
Okay. Any other questions?
One final thing. We've gone through this issue before, years ago, with this dining in the parking lots and the safety structures, not a piece of lattice preventing the car going through it. Cupid Candies, Arilla's, Whitehead, Metamorphosis, for those of you who knows what that shop was, it's where Part of Capri is now, Dr. Chin's office next to Rennie's, and two others that I can't remember, where cars went through the proposed area of where this is, up over the stone thing and into the buildings. That can very well happen with people sitting in places out here. This is one way going south, coming off of Harlem and exiting at 123rd. I've seen people come in the other way, accidents waiting to happen, not realizing, that's it, now they're coming there. And then you're decreasing the width of that where people are going to be sitting, whether it's for two weeks or two months. The thing is, we've gone through this, it's not appropriate to have it there, because like Alderman Vasso and a few others have said, others can ask, we told Capri to take the tent down now, the code was gone, and they requested. Then they came back with, want to put an outdoor patio there. Gee, what happened there? Where are they going to put the cars? Where are they going to park, because they won't utilize the municipal lot? Oh, okay, we'll find another place. Next will be Highland House, they're going to want it. Ben Franklin sort of solved the problem himself, like he's got it as a prime example of how it should be done. Not a temporary thing to be shoved out there behind some lattice and everything with all this congestion going on and cars and traffic going. Accidents happen, they're unavoidable, and you're putting people in harm's way. And I just don't think it's appropriate to do that. And besides that, if the gentleman had paid up his current business license, that might be another story, because he owes for that, too.
He always had it.
Oh, does he?
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Bassow.
No.
Alderman Clifford.
No.
Alderman Key.
No.
Alderman Violet.
No.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
No.
Motion's not agreed to.
All right. Anything else? All right, thank you, sir. Water and sewer, Alderman Violet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt an ordinance amending section 50.06 charges. Primarily deals with new construction and catifies our current practice.
Move Alderman Violet. Second by Alderman Key, discussion, roll call.
Did we already do this last week or last time?
Yeah, I think this one's a little different.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a redundant one.
Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
I would also like to announce that next week's water and sewer meeting is canceled.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anything else? Business and economic development, Alderman Key?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you mentioned, the car show is Thursday, and it's going to be a hot week. It's always a hot when we have the car show, but we have hundreds of classic cars coming to be observed, and we usually have thousands of people show up that night. And so this is very good for our businesses and our restaurants, and, you know, it's family-friendly. Bring your families and enjoy dinner, and then enjoy a look at all the cars. It's from 5:00 until 9:00, and there is a raffle involved, and there's also food vendors and other kind of vendors out there, so come out and enjoy. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Cable?
No report, Mr. Mayor, tonight.
All right. All business?
Mr. Mayor? It was interesting, it was just brought to my attention because I hadn't gone over to look, that the issue that we just discussed that was not approved, it's already been resolved, the guy took the structure down already. I didn't know about that, so it's interesting. So he might not have liked the proposal that we sent out originally.
I'd just like to say hello to Mrs. Novak. I'm sorry I was sitting right next to her, and I didn't say hello. But with Mrs. Novak's issue, I can say that I've also contacted the code enforcer because one of those properties in town is way over one too many. And unfortunately, with what we have called due process, which I think is, you know, a rather slow process, we all have to follow the due process, and to me, it is never fast enough. By the time we get to court, if it goes that far, that person will have died and/or moved away, and then that problem will be resolved, or resolve all by itself just because of the time situation of due process. I understand from the past that it's almost, according to our staff, it was impossible to find out who's holding the mortgage on those properties. And if the owner gave forth the information that he's gone into foreclosure, that's probably one step closer to a resolution than we've ever had, we've had on so many other properties that end up in that condition. Because certainly, you know, I would assume that if the neighbors, the community, and investors knew what was happening on those properties sooner rather than later, there might be someone to jump in and clear that situation up much quicker than making fines and violations, et cetera, et cetera. To go along with that, complaining about the grass cutting, my information may be mistaken, but I think we charge much too little, lean the property much too little if we have to send our staff over to cut property, grass on private property. I was astounded, I pay more to cut my grass, and I keep my grass pretty well cut than somebody that isn't going to bother and has the city come and do it and charge them. So I think maybe we should look at that also, our fine situation maybe to such an extent where it actually is painful, it's painful to accept even if the property is going into foreclosure. But I hope that gets resolved sooner than most of these situations do. You can only cross your fingers.
What do you think they charge to cut the grass?
I think somebody told me $100. In the past, I heard $500. I said, well, that's acceptable. That sounds like a penalty. $100 sounds like my lawn died.
It's $200 plus, plus if they do other than just cut it, but clean it up and get it presentable, they charge extra, but it's...
That's $200 a cut, it's not every week. It's once a month, or whatever, once every two months.
But just to set the record, so you charge it, and I've asked him, and I've asked Adam, and he's nice enough because when they did cut it, it was so large, the grass was like a hayfield, and it just left this stuff all over. It was all this clutter, whatever, clumps, whatever you want to call it. And I asked, could we do a better job in that? He said, we'll just have to charge them extra, over the 200, to clean it up and make it more presentable. And I asked him to do that because my feeling is, this isn't the only house around here. There's others, there's a couple in the area, I won't mention their addresses and that, that should be looked at. They beat the bare, I know, the bare minimum maintenance code, which is, to me, is unlivable the way some of these people live in and paying $1,400, $1,600, and $1,700, according to people I talked to that live in a swallow like that. And they have that exist in Payless Heights, where you say it's a pride of the community and a great place to live, and then you got that next door to that people, and you got this next to these people, and it shouldn't happen, period. It shouldn't, they should be held accountable. And as far as that goes, as long as we're on it, the parking lots behind the stores where we're talking, where Mr. Midville Pizza and all of that, where those owners are, the back of that place is a travesty. It's full of potholes, it's full of decaying asphalt, it's falling apart, and how you would expect anybody to walk in there and not trip and everything? And they should be held accountable, the owners, not the store owners, but the owners of those buildings, to maintain their parking lots in a fashionable way that you can egress and enter their places. Because you go back there, you know as well as I do, that's what happened. I had to put a fishing sign in the pole behind Mr. Patel's place up there at, behind, by Looms, when they were towing cars. He had a pothole in there, it was just this deep, about I don't know how big, and I made a sign up, and I stuck it in there with a ruler, show you how to depth, and I put it in there, and it said, no fishing.
All right. Any other business?
Well, what I'm getting at is sometimes you almost have to embarrass them to fix their own property, and I don't think that should have to be done. Sorry for the outrage, but it should be done.
Citizens with any questions? Do business, entertain a motion to adjourn. On favor?